The three regional councillors are having their townhouse or open house town meeting.
I thought it was 12:30.
Is it 12:30? I thought it was 12. Anyway, don't be late.
Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call the Committee of the Whole Meeting for the Town of Grimsby for Tuesday, April 6, 2021 to order. First off, are there any disclosures of pecuniary interest? Seeing none. Just before we approve the agenda, I just have an opening statement. On April 5, 1790, 231 years ago, the first meeting of Township Number Six, or what we now know as Grimsby, took place. This is notable both locally and provincially, as it was the first session of municipal government in Upper Canada, which would eventually become Ontario. The plaque commemorating this in front of Nellis Manor on Main Street West reads in part, "This marked the beginning of a local self-government by elected representatives of the people. I think it is important to remind members of council that to be role models and voices for our residents. All of us must set aside our private thoughts on matters and listen to the people. But council alone cannot achieve success of our residents and the town. It takes a set of hardworking, dedicated, and experienced staff who are connected with the community. They interact with and deliver to the residents our policy decisions. In effect, they are council's frontline workers. As a council, I know that each and every one of you will act in the best interests of our staff to ensure that they have the appropriate resources, work environment, and empowerment to action our policies. Considering the pressures placed on staff during this pandemic, our diligence in this regard is more important than ever. So on behalf of all members of council and our residents, I would like to thank our staff, both past and present, for their hard work and perseverance. Better days are ahead, and we thank them for their continuing commitment to the people and history of the town." Now we move to number three, approval of the agenda.
Mayor Jordan.
Yes.
Could I interrupt? Since before you approved the agenda, I just had a housekeeping question about the agenda. Especially tonight, there's about five extra As on it with an arrow through it. I would understand that this probably some of the add-ons that we've had over the last couple of days. And just for the public to know this too, and you know, if they read the agenda a few days ago and then come to the meeting tonight, they're going to notice that it's a different agenda now. And I noticed one thing, it wasn't an add-on, it was eight, two A was actually, something was removed and not added to. So, and when we get to consent agenda, I want to lift that anyhow. Anyhow, just I noticed that we've had a lot of changes. So I just wanted to point that out.
Great. Thanks for your comments, councillor Dunstall. I'll have you as a mover for the adoption of the agenda. And a secondaire, councillor Sharp. Moved by councillor Dunstall, second by councillor Sharp, resolved that the agenda for the Committee of the Whole Meeting of April 6, 2021 be approved. All in favor? That's carried. Need a mover and secondaire for the Grimsby Green Advisory Committee Council Endorsement Package? Councillor Bothwell moving, councillor Frick secondary. Moved by councillor Bothwell, second by councillor Frick. Oh, councillor Sharp, you'd like to speak?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor Jordan. So I'm on the Grimsby Green Advisory Committee, and we had our meeting this past week, and at the committee, we appointed a chairperson. That was Carl Gonson. And he was actually our only volunteer for chair, but he was appointed as a chair. And we also deferred the appointment of vice chair. And because we are appointing a few new committee members to the Green Advisory Committee, so we decided as a committee to defer that appointment until our next meeting, when we will have some new members. So I think these are items that are on our on the council endorsement package. So just so that the rest of council is aware, those are two things that happened at our meeting just two weeks ago or last week. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Sharp. Moved by councillor Bothwell, second by councillor Frick. Resolve that the Grimsby Green Advisory Committee Council Endorsement Package dated April 6, 2021 be approved. All in favor? That's carried. Up next, we have number five, adoption of previous minutes. Need a mover and secondaire? Councillor Bothwell. And a secondaire? Councillor Dunstall. Councillor Bothwell, you wanted to speak on them?
Yes, Mayor Jordan, thank you. I'd like to speak on the Grimsby Economic Development Committee minutes.
Yes.
Thank you. I just have a question for the chair. I believe councillor Cadwell is the chair. In the minutes, Dave, the agenda included a number of terms of reference for working groups under the GDAC as well as the GDAC's Terms of Reference. And I just have some questions because the terms of reference for the Economic Development Strategy Working Group and GDAC were noted as draft. And I just wondered if this means that council is approving those terms of reference tonight? And if so, I just have a concern because the Economic Development Working Group Terms of Reference includes some wording on it that I find unusual for an advisory committee working group, where they're developing a work plan, and in it, it says determining if the services of an outside consultant are required. And as applicable, develop and launch a formal RFP process to select an appropriate consultant and develop an understanding of and provide leadership through the process required to identify and hire an economic development strategy consultant who will lead the development of the economic development strategy. And that they would be specifically actions and deliverables will be produced during this initiative will include a detailed budget, a detailed work plan, and an RFP for the selection of a third-party consultant deemed appropriate. So I'm just wondering if, in my mind, those aren't deliverables in the Terms of Reference for a working group that I think would be suitable? Because working groups don't normally have a budget, and to be that involved in an RFP process, to me, is a bit of a is overstepping in the sense that our procurement manager should be handling that. Same as the Heritage Committee, with the Main Street East, I mean, we had very little consultation in it or input into it. It was created by the procurement officer. So I'm just, if the, I also would like to note the clerk has reviewed this, because there's some wording on the conflict of interest that it tells members to go to her to determine if there's a conflict. And I believe we should be more consistent with all of our advisory committees on directing people to the proper conflict of interest in the, in our procedures, procedural operations. So if the clerk and the chair could comment on that, I'm not content with approving them if this is the way they're going to go forward. Thank you.
Councillor Cadwell?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Jordan. I'm not going to comment right now. What I was hoping, that we've always done in the past, at least on my long term of council, usually the chair of the committee gets to give his report first, and then questions are asked. So I would ask Mr. Mayor if I can do that first.
Yes, you're welcome to give your report.
Thank you. To the public and members of council, we had our GDAC meeting on on March 24 at 8:06 in the morning, and we reviewed. There was no pecuniary interest from anybody. We approved the agenda. We had correspondence. There was four letters of correspondence. One was from the Regional Emergency Rapid Task Force meetings. There were four meetings that they held from January to the end of February of 2021. The Niagara Regional Economic Development Recovery Plan update, the third update was given to us from February of 2021. Also, we had a report with Q and As involving Dr. Herji with everything that's been going on with the pandemic and that. And also, the last piece of correspondence was the West Niagara Virtual Town Hall Meeting, which is tomorrow at 12:30. It's a virtual meeting, and it's consisting of of the three regional councillors, the economic development officers from Lincoln, West Lincoln, Grimsby, and also West Lincoln, sorry, economic development officers from the Niagara region. So that should be a very interesting and very educational event, and I hope everybody's registered. I'm registered. Looking forward to it at 12:30 tomorrow. We also, just flipping my notes here, we did committee business. And under committee business, we had a report from our two subcommittees. One of the, and these subcommittees have been just, they've been really dynamic in getting, in the work they've been doing. The once subcommittee is the Economic Development Strategy, which is under, I'm only going to say first names, committee members. Richard, Mike, Alejandra, and Adam is involved with those, as well as a staff member. The second subcommittee is working on the Business Retention Expansion. And the committee members there are Susan, councillor Ritchie, and Rebecca and Adam again. They're doing some great work there. Good reports from both groups. They've been meeting for an hour, about twice a month, to get their reports together and that. So doing a fantastic job. The next subcommittee, sorry, committee business, was a GDAC Update Draft Terms of Reference Governance and Administrative Update. Again, it's a draft form. Also, we're going to be having a staff update, but unfortunately, our economic development officer, Adam, is off on sick leave right now, and wish him all the very best. GDAC, we also had GDAC member updates. Susan Manuel is a director with the Chamber of Commerce. That's great. I think Susan will do a fantastic job. And we all wish her very, very well through her term as a director on, with the chamber. We also had a brief report, DIA update from Mike Willis-Craft, and there was some good discussion on the Jersey barriers that were up last year to support the businesses and the patios in our downtown. So unfortunately, the discussion that we were having was how we can make the Jersey barriers look a little, a little more attractive, I guess is the word. So unfortunately, I believe the plan was to have them up by April 15. But with the pandemic, and I will be looking, obviously, getting the go-ahead news from the province so we can move forward. So maybe sometime early May, hopefully, but that's not a, we're not going to commit to that right now. But anyways, that's just an update. Also had an update from Rebecca Shelley. She gave a brief update with the, how the new directors board, information to GDAC with that. And also, she reminded us of the Chamber fundraising golf tournament, which is going to be held Tuesday, June 8 at Penn Lake. So hopefully, we're all able to get out there and enjoy that event, and let's look forward to that. Our next meeting will be Wednesday, May 19 at 8:30 in the morning. That's all I have right now. If there's any questions on that, I'll try to answer them, also with the help of councillor Ritchie, who was at the meeting too. So, ready?
Thank you, councillor Cadwell. Councillor Bothwell, did you?
Can you give me a closed notes version to that councillor? And we can, I'll try to answer it. If I can't answer it, I'll look to get information from staff to get back to you on that.
Okay, so I'm not prepared to approve the minutes if the draft Terms of Reference will go forward tonight and be approved. I feel that there's some, the areas that are within the Terms of Reference. I'd like to know if the clerk actually reviewed it for consistency with other advisory committees, because I find there's some discrepancies with respect to conformity with other advisory committee Terms of Reference. And I thought that we were looking at trying to become more universal. I also had serious concerns with respect to the budgeting aspect and the leadership role on an RFP for a position that's being hired that has a financial impact that council has not approved. So I'd like to know if the clerk can clarify that, and you know, I really, I'd like to know if there was input from the clerk's department into these Terms of Reference. Thank you.
Sarah?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. At this time, it's just a, it's just a draft version, so it was only received by the committee. So we're receiving all input, and it will come to council once that's been changed, if it requires to do so. So it is not being approved today at council. It's not being discussed at council today, but it's still at the draft stage at the advisory committee level. Our new deputy clerk will also be reviewing it in detail for the next advisory committee meeting.
Okay, thank you. That answers it. Because like I said, I had some concerns that it's quite a bit different from other committees, and that threshold of budget and approval, to me, is not a working group advisory group. So the conflict of interest is another area that I think they've expanded on it with language that would not be consistent with our current conflict of interest. So I'll leave that with you. If it's only accepting it as a draft, I'm fine with that. Thank you.
Yes, through you, Mr. Mayor. It's just being received tonight, and we will make sure to take all your comments and bring it back to the advisory committee.
If I may, Mr. Mayor, just a quick comment?
Sure.
Yeah, again, it was just a draft form that we received at the meeting, and the members of GDAC are very excited and interesting in working on the, on what can be brought forward for the Terms of Reference. So just a draft. Thank you.
Thank you. CAO Schlang?
Yes, thank you, Mayor, to councillor Bothwell. Yeah, good comments. On behalf of Adam, I'll take those comments back. That's not the intent. You know, we're going to be using the purchasing manager for any RFP. So we'll make that much clearer. Thank you for that input.
Thank you, CAO. Councillor Ritchie?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Also, just to add to those comments. No, our budget has already been approved for GDAC, so I just wanted to give a little information. From my understanding, is that the budget that you're talking about there is, we've received grant money, and in the name of accountability and transparency, if we were to use that grant money as, within our parameters, that we're working specifically with OMAFRA in, and they basically state what we're allowed to spend the money and not. So that Terms of Reference there, or not, the draft Terms of Reference would just be for transparency. If we're looking to source something out that we can't handle in the working groups or GDAC itself, that's my understanding. I may be wrong with that, but that's what it's about, just for openness and transparency, my understanding. And that's why it's different, because the money's already there through grant finances. If, with that, also looking, when you talk about the integrity commissioner, I believe the integrity commissioner only, when it comes to conflict of interest, if they're looking for opinion, deals with council. So because we're doing some of these, with these working groups in the GDAC format, we want to make sure that there's no conflict of interest with the members on the committee. And that's why we'd send them to the clerk, who would then be able to advise them a little bit stronger and maybe get some more information on that. And that's my understanding. It's not to circumvent any rules. It's just that the integrity commissioner does not support them, so we want to make sure that it's open and transparent to everybody, from my understanding. I could be misspeaking here, but that's the way that I was understanding it.
Can we get the clerk to clarify that while we have that question in front of us, please?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. The clerk's department typically does not comment on any individual conflicts of interest. So we'll work with the GDAC committee to clarify that, and if there's any avenues to go to the integrity commissioner for the advisory members.
Thank you.
Councillor Dunstall?
Yeah, thank you. Just further to the Terms of Reference, if we were approving them tonight, would they not have shown up on the council endorsement package and not just be a draft in the minutes of the meeting? Because most of the time, when we have these minutes come, we just receive them. So we're not actually approving anything when we receive the minutes. So when the Terms of Reference come to us, it should appear on the endorsement package portion of the agenda, I would think. Am I correct? The clerk will tell me.
Sarah?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. That's correct. Tonight, we're just receiving the minutes.
Thank you for that clarification.
Thank you, everyone. Seeing no further questions or comments. Moved by councillor Bothwell, second by councillor Dunstall, resolve that the following be received. Grimsby Economic Development Committee minutes of March 24, 2021. Grimsby Green Advisory Committee minutes of March 31, 2021. All in favor? That's carried. Yeah. Yep. Up next, we move to our consent agenda. Is there anything that anyone wants to lift? Councillor Dunstall?
Thank you, your worship. Yes, I would like to lift eight two A, the report DRS 21-07 for discussion.
All right. And councillor Bothwell?
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to lift 8.1A, referred matters list.
All right, that will be noted. So we have our consent agenda as amended. Need a mover and secondaire? Councillor Vardy, mover, new secondaire? Councillor Frick? Moved by councillor Vardy, second by councillor Frick. Resolve that the Committee of the Whole hereby approves the following items, and that the various consent items be approved on the recommendation as contained therein. Integrity Commissioner Report IC 11767-1020 Clarification. FIN 21-05 2021 Water Rates. DRS 21-09 RFQ 2021-01 PRC Maintenance and Repair Grimsby Lions Outdoor Community Pool. DPW 21-08 Appointment of Weeden Inspectors. All in favor? That's carried. Yeah. Up next, we will be discussing our referred matters list. Just need a mover and secondaire to get it on the floor? Moved by councillor Sharp, second by councillor Frick? Any discussion? Councillor Bothwell?
Thank you, Mayor Jordan. I have three items I just would like to bring forward on the referred matters. I know that the Casablanca Northeast Quadrant transfer has been removed. I think it was last on our September 2021 referred list. And I would just like an update, because the status of it at that time was that it was pending the region putting through a resolution, which they did on July 20, I think. But there was no, just looking here, on July 14, 2020, the Niagara Region Public Works Committee passed a bylaw to transfer this section of the regional road system to the town, as well, they approved an amending bylaw to permit the town of Grimsby to register the subject lands as owner. Final approval of these recommendations will be brought to the Regional Council on July 23, 2020. So I just want to confirm with the CAO and planning staff that the actual registration in the land registry office by the town was completed. It's just one of those things that has been bumped back and forth numerous times, where, you know, staff have been under the impression a step was done, and then it's found it wasn't. So I would just like a final clarification to close that file from staff, that the actual, considering we're in COVID, that the actual land titles registry was done, and that the town is in ownership of that Casablanca Northeast Quadrant. So if I could ask the clerk to add that back in, or to put it as an information request for a follow-up, that would be appreciated. The second item in there was the noise bylaw was was put back in as a Q2 bring-forward item. But I just wanted to note that the noise bylaw that I brought forward motion to Committee of the Whole on March 1, 2021, was actually defeated five to four. The motion I brought forward was that staff be directed to approach Niagara Regional Police, requesting that they undertake an Operation Loud and Clear initiative in the town of Grimsby commencing early summer of 2021, and that bylaw 1122 be reviewed more comprehensively as part of the bylaw review exercise being undertaken in 2021. And that was a recorded vote that was defeated five to four. So it followed that the information report would only be received, and no action would be taken at this time. So unfortunately, although I've had a number of residents ask us to strengthen some other areas of that noise bylaw, it was defeated. So I believe unfortunately, it has to be removed from the referred matters list, because it's not a carry-forward item in the current state. The last item I just would like to bring forward, and I don't know if it's part of, if it's an information request I'd like to bring forward, or if it should be done as referred matters. But I'd like to bring forward an information request, bylaw 1637, being a bylaw to appoint banking signing officers, which was passed by council June 20, 2016. Section 1 lists the authorized banking signing officers on behalf of the corporation as the mayor, town manager, director of finance, assistant director of finance, and deputy treasurer, manager of accounting. It also designates any holding the following positions to sign checks, any two of the following, to hold positions to sign checks in the event that the treasurer and or mayor are not available. And that's the town manager, assistant director of finance, and deputy treasurer, the manager of accounting. It also notes in that bylaw, under investing authority, that the town designates any one of the three individuals holding the following positions as authorized as trading officers to the town's accounts with investment brokers. And that's the director of finance and treasurer, assistant director of finance and deputy treasurer, and the manager of accounting. And then there was a resolution passed by council on December 3, 2018. Signing authorities, C 18212, resolve that the following officers, employees of the corporation of the town of Grimsby, be authorized as signing authorities for banking purposes. Those being the mayor, Jeffrey A. Jordan, CAO Derek Brant, Director of Finance Treasurer Stephen Gruninger, Assistant Director of Finance Deputy Treasurer Sonia Bovin, and the manager of accounting, Noreen Broome. So my request is, as Derek Brant is no longer the CAO, could the CAO now please confirm who the authorized banking signing authorities were as of March 31, 2021? And that's an information request, please. And that's it. Thank you.
You, councillor Bothwell. Councillor Vardy?
Thank you very much. I guess my question is really about the outstanding closed session items. I believe there was a request for them back in February 2020, and I'd like to know where we're at with that request. Don't all answer.
Our clerk is going to answer that. Sarah?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. Yes, I believe we, in our forecasting, we have a closed session for our next meeting of April 19, and I will be bringing that during. and I will be bringing that during that meeting.
All right. Seeing no further discussion, we have moved by Counselor Sharp, second by Counselor Frake, resolve that the referred matters list dated April 1st, 2021 be received for information. On favor? All right, why don't we call for a recorded vote? I don't see people putting up their hands.
Counselor Bothwell?
Yes.
Counselor Dunstall?
Yes.
Counselor Frake?
Yes.
Counselor Cadwell?
Yes.
Counselor Ritchie?
Yes.
Counselor Sharp?
Yes.
Counselor Vane?
Yes.
Counselor Vardy?
Yes.
Mayor Jordan?
Yes.
That's carried.
Up next, we're moving to. Nine point one A. Now we move to nine point one A report TC 21 dash zero one appointment of integrity commissioner. Need a mover and seconder to get it on the floor? Mover and seconder. Counselor Sharp? Seconder? Do I see a seconder? Oh, Counselor Frake? And discussion? Any? And then moved by Counselor Sharp, second by Counselor Frake, resolve that report TC 21 dash zero one appointment of integrity commissioner dated April 6th, 2021 be received. And that council appoint Michael Maynard from ADR Chambers as the integrity commissioner for the town of Grimsby. And the council authorized the mayor and clerk to execute all amendments to the agreement for integrity commissioner services between the town of Grimsby and ADR Chambers. The council approves the appointment by law attached as appendix A to appoint Michael Maynard as the integrity commissioner for the town of Grimsby at the April 19th, 2021 council meeting. On favor? That's carried. Now we're moving to Parks and Recreation. Report DRS 21 dash zero seven. Mover and seconder to get it on the floor? I can't see their screens. Move by Counselor Dunstall. And seconder? Counselor Sharp? Counselor Dunstall, you'd like to start the discussion?
Yeah, thank you, your worship. Yeah, I I lifted this because when I first read the report, I believe there was two vehicles we were looking at. And then when I read it today, one seemed to drop off. I thought there was one for public works, but my real question is is the fact that we've gone to the lowest bidder and it's somewhere in London. And I was just wondering what the other three bidders were so that the general public would know too, who who missed out on it. And maybe it was somebody locally that bided too high. I just thought we normally see that in most of our vehicle bids, we see who bid on it. So we know is is this a change then to the way we do do things? Are we not going to see the other bids going forward? That was my question.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, Mr. Dunstall. We had two bids and they were both with companies out of the area. We're not seeing a lot of local bidders on on a lot of the fleet vehicles because there's really not a lot of money to be made by the dealer. And what with the issues with the availability of trucks and things like that? It's it's really up in the air who's going to bid on them and that. And our last vehicle that we tendered for the parks ended up coming from Collingwood area. And we're just not seeing the local bidders bidding on our on our vehicles.
Well, that's a very good explanation. You said only two bids. I guess I must have read something where it said four bids. That might have been the other vehicle, but was there at one point the another vehicle for for public works at the time and then it was withdrawn? I if we get some clarification there. That's why I I when I saw the report today, I just got sidetracked. I wasn't sure what we were doing. Was there a one point, a an approval for a vehicle for the public works department?
I'll I'll take that if you don't mind through you, Mr. Mayor. So yes, there was a second vehicle. We actually did a joint purchasing with Park and Rex and Public Works. We ended up finding a discrepancy with one of the vehicles in in terms of it didn't meet the specifications of the public works vehicle. So essentially, we have to go back and make sure that we're being fair, fair process to both the bidders. We didn't pick it up until after the report was prepared. So we want to make sure we're doing our due diligence and well, we'll be making sure that we're talking to our purchasing manager with respect to the next steps.
Thank you both. Great explanations. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Counselor Cadwell?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor Jordan. Here, I'll just do this. There we go. Yeah. And thanks for the report. I did have that question too. And and Mike did get back to me and I appreciated his response in that. And I'm I'm fine with everything. Just got a question to Mike. So the the new truck we're buying is a crew cab, which is great. The the old truck, the 2005, was that a crew cab or just a standard pickup truck, Mike?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. It was just a standard pickup truck. My thoughts were the the crew cab was more of a value and use for parks. You know, when COVID is over, I'm hoping that we can put more people into a vehicle and transport them using less vehicles is always the goal.
Yeah, thanks, Mike. The report was good, but I've just think trying to think back and thank you for the answer to that. I appreciate it. Thanks.
Thank you, Counselor Cadwell. Seeing no further discussion. Moved by Counselor Sharp or Dunstall, sorry, second by Counselor Sharp, resolve that report DRS 21 dash zero seven. RFQ 2021 dash zero one P W C parks fleet vehicle replacement dated April 6th, 2021 be received. And that staff be authorized to purchase a new 2022 Chevrolet Silverado 1500 truck from Finch Auto Group, 640 Wonderland Road North, London, Ontario, and the amount of $36,407. All in favor? That's carried. All right, perfect. All right. Now we're moving to item 10 point one A, report DRS 21 oh six, community project grant program policy. Yeah, Sarah, welcome.
Good evening, Mayor Jordan, members of council. I'm actually going to turn this piece over to our recreation supervisor, Trevor. Trevor's done a whole lot of work preparing for this program and policy. So he's well equipped to take you through some of the highlights and answer any questions you have. So off you go, Trevor.
Thank you, Sarah. Good evening, members of council.
Welcome, Trevor.
Thank you. So this policy outlines the community project grant program, which is the first grant program coming out of the community investment policy. And this program is really to invest in local projects, community projects from community groups, local organizations as they're looking to to bring new things to the community. So this kind of sets out the the guidelines, the outline, eligibility criteria, terms and conditions. The program schedule for those who are seeking to apply. We are looking at a bit of a modified schedule for 2021. We're normally going to be looking at applications in March with a deadline at the end of April. And that's not quite a reach this year. So we're looking at mid May and end of June for our call this year. The limit for funding would be $2,500 per application, the max of $20,000 for the program. And one of the big pieces we're looking to institute this year, the awareness of the program is going to be a key part. I'm making sure that local community groups are aware of what we're what they're eligible for and what steps that they can take to ensure that they're eligible in the future, perhaps not just in 2021, but as we go forward. So we will be working on communicating with groups through a detailed applicant guide, hosting annual public information sessions with prospective community groups, having opportunities for one on one meetings with town staff to ensure that they have a good understanding of expectations and what they might be eligible for. And of course, communications through our website, social media channels and the newspaper so that all groups in the community who have an idea or have a project that they think could benefit from this funding have the opportunity to apply. So if you have any questions about the details laid out in the policy, I'm happy to take those now.
Great. Thanks, Trevor. Counselor Cadwell?
There we go. Yeah, thank you very much, Mayor Jordan, and thank you, Trevor, for this report. Read through it. I like the financial impact side of it. $20,000 is a very, I think it's a very fair and reasonable budget, so to speak to it. And yeah, that that I was very impressed with that. I mean, and we're using the the N P I directors funds, reserves. So again, that's that was the whole purpose of the of when we when we set up. And it was before my time, I believe. I believe Counselor Furtick was on council back then when when council decided rather than get paid for your work on a on a board, hydro board, that the money goes into a stipend fund for back to the community. I think that's fantastic. So Trevor, I guess my question is, is the criteria a little bit of, and I mentioned this earlier when it was first brought forward, is that the criteria set up a bit like the former Jim Wright Memorial Fund? It's still can sports teams. If you can just elaborate on the types of organizations that may be available, may be allowed to apply. That'd be great, Trevor. Thank you.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. Absolutely. So this policy and this program has a little bit more of a robust eligibility component than the Jim Wright Memorial Fund. That fund was intended more of a of a fee subsidy program where kind of on an ad hoc basis, we would have, we would take requests on an ongoing basis. And depending on the nature of the project, we may provide in kind funding or or some financial funding. In this case, we're looking to establish a bit of a more robust program where there is a clear grant call during a certain period of time. And that organizations who are providing that financial funding to meet a set of criteria, that doesn't put the corporation at risk. So to your point, though, in terms of which types of groups, sports groups, culture groups, any really not for profit community group or charitable organization in town would be eligible. And a big part of this will be working with those existing organizations and not just existing organizations, but prospective organizations, community members who might have an idea for a project that they want to bring forward. We'd be looking to work with them and potentially be able to use some of this funding to see those projects carry out.
Great. Thanks.
Thank you, Trevor. Seeing no further questions, just need a mover and seconder? If you could just raise your hand because I'm having trouble with my screen and I can't see any counselors. Moved by Counselor Ritchie. And second by Counselor Sharp, I saw your hand go up. Moved by Counselor Ritchie, second by Counselor Sharp, resolve that report DRS 21 dash zero six, community project grant program policy dated April 6th, 2021 be received and the community project grant program policy be approved. I'll just go for recorded and then because, all right, I'm just calling for a recorded vote because I only have Counselor Sharp on my screen right now. So.
Counselor Bothwell?
Yes.
Counselor Dunstall?
Yes.
Counselor Frake?
Yes.
Counselor Cadwell?
Yes.
Counselor Ritchie?
Yes.
Counselor Sharp?
Yes.
Counselor Vane?
Yes.
Counselor Vardy?
Yes.
Mayor Jordan?
Yes.
That's carried.
We're just going to take a five minute break right now just to to get myself a new computer that actually I can see council on. So we'll see you in in five minutes. Thank you. that actually I can see council on, so we'll see you in five minutes. Thank you. All right, welcome back, everyone, and sorry for the technical difficulties. We're moving to ten, or Report DRS 21-08, Carolinian Tree Planting. Need a mover and seconder to get it on the floor. Moved by Counselor Vardy. Secondary, Counselor Dunstall. Counselor Vardy.
Well, I just want to be the first one to thank Sarah for all the work that she's done on this. I know from talking to Sarah and also from talking to Richard Sparrow that you've both connected with a lot of different Carolinian groups and residents and got a lot of input from a lot of different places, and I think you've just done a great job. And I just want to say how much I appreciate the enthusiasm, not just that you're doing this work, but the enthusiasm that you've brought to doing this work. So I wanted to thank you very much.
Counselor Sharp.
Yes, thanks, Mayor Jordan. I want to also thank Sarah and the other staff that's involved in this report, and a great job. Sarah will know because she's a staff member at our Green Advisory Committee. We had some discussions at the Green Advisory Committee about this. And one of the discussions we had was about what constitutes a Carolinian tree. And so I did some Google researching and like, it's not really clear. And on some places, it says that sugar maples are not Carolinian trees. And others, I think it must say that they are. I know Mayor Jordan knows a lot about like different tree species and stuff. And our committee, he was at... But we kind of talked about developing a list of like approved trees. And we were using the term native, native trees. Or maybe Mayor Jordan, if you can help me, because I know he knows more about this. Just a way that we won't, so I don't want to be...
Counselor Sharp, I'll just, I'll help you if you don't mind.
Yeah, sure.
Just what, a sugar maple, most people agree that although it's not found only in the Carolinian forest, it is found in the Carolinian forest. So it's not an exclusive Carolinian forest species, but it is part of the Carolinian forest makeup. So to broaden the species diversity and the number of trees that are available for planting, adding some of these species that are found in the Carolinian forest, but also in other forest regions as well. We felt as a committee that was a more fulsome way to get more species diversity in the town, and species diversity is something that is very important. And with the Carolinian forest actually being the most diverse ecosystem in Canada, it's something that the more species, the merrier, so to speak. So thanks, Counselor Sharp, for allowing me to expound. If you have anything more, feel free to continue.
I do. So thanks, Mayor Jordan, because I mean, you know a lot, like I don't know the... But there's little things like I've been making maple syrup. And, you know, so I like to go out and spot like big sugar maple trees. They have the most sugar content in their sap. But so I really don't want this to limit us. And so I'd like to, I'd like to find a way to make the... To have staff come up with a list, and I'd like to be able to look at that list. And the other thing was that I don't want to be, I wanted to have an exemption for community gardens. Because there are some things that you want to plant in your garden that aren't native. And so in the case where we have, where we're specifically growing something to eat, there are some foods that we, that don't come from here. We don't want to stop them from being planted in our community gardens on town property. That's all I had to say.
Counselor Bothwell.
Commissioner Jordan, we didn't get, give Sarah a chance to speak to her report, but it's, I mean, we're all just enthused. There's so much in it. And I hope people do go and read it because some of the projects and initiatives that you're taking on, there's a lot of really, really good ones in there. So I think we...
All right.
Sorry.
Yeah, I just think at this point, I'm sorry, Sarah, I'm a little excited about the Carolinian forest. So yes, I would love for you to speak now.
Well, it's wonderful to see such enthusiasm. And not only is that very evident through the council table, but also among our staff team. There's a ton of interest across all the departments to really get involved in this work. And of course, in the community as well, we're seeing lots of interest with community members reaching out for ideas and how can they get involved. So exciting project for Grimsby. I won't talk too long. Hopefully you did find the report interesting. There is quite a number of pieces in there. But we've broken down some of the different elements of work that we're going to be working on in 2021 to further this Carolinian work. That includes some new tree planting work, protecting and maintaining the trees that we have, recognizing that that's also extremely important, doing some education and awareness about what Carolinian trees are. And to Counselor Sharp's point, we will need to dive into that list a little bit more and define it. And we will be using some of the partners that we have in our community to help with that. And we know the Niagara region does have a list that they've developed. And also, NPCA has just been a tremendous resources that we started to connect with on this as well. So we do have some great starting points to get that work going. Two projects I wanted to touch on specifically in the Carolinian forest work is doing some work down at Forty Mile Creek down by the pump house. We had a meeting with the NPCA and looking at a variety of pieces, including the bridge down there, which we know is also a priority. We're really looking at what we can do down in that park area to restore the forest area there and really also making it a Carolinian pilot project for us. So it will be a wonderful pilot project, but also a really great partnership piece with us with NPCA, hopefully. So that's very exciting. And the other special project that we're really excited to do is a seedling project, where we'll be looking to take some seeds from some mature trees throughout our community and actually regrowing those seeds so that two to three years later, we'll be actually able to take those same, the seeds from those trees and replanting them in our community. I think it'll be something the community really enjoys, and we'll get them involved in that project as well. So we really look forward to taking on this work. We'll be coming back to you in Q4 with some of our updates as to where we've gotten to and where we're looking to go into 2022 as well. And I'm happy to hear more comments or questions or ideas. I know there's lots.
Great, thank you very much, Sarah. And yes, thank you. Counselor Bothwell.
Thank you, Mayor Jordan, and thanks, Sarah. It's been exciting to see the work on Grimsby Green, too, where we're going to look at partnering with the Garden Club, who's also looking at having an April event where they're going to have Carolinian species available for the public to purchase. So I think everyone is interested in watching out for that as well. I read in your report, the story of the shag bark hickory that fell down in Grimsby Beach and the group of citizens that have secured the young trees and trying to bring back that species in that area. And that work is planned. I think that's great. I'd like to, I would hope that there's a way possibly to encourage some genetically strong butternuts as well because we're, you know, with the Phelps property, taking down the butternuts there and then having they replanted them in Smithville. And we have, I know there are species at risk and they won't tell us where they're planted, but it would be nice to have, you know, the butternuts as well come back. We had some on Nixon Hall property as well that we might have lost. So just, you know, I appreciate that you're looking at protecting those species. If there's a way, when you guys do the inventory of trees, you talked about going out and doing an inventory of trees on public and roadway lands. If we identify any that are of significant age, it would also be neat to somehow identify them by age. And then we can possibly look at heritage protection for those trees. I know there is one in Grimsby Beach that's a butternut that's estimated to be, I don't know, 200, 300 years old. So it's on private property, but the potential is that we could discover some within-town property as well. So just keeping, you know, hopefully we'll see something come forward on that. When your eye is out there looking at those trees as to age and we can look at other opportunities within maybe the Heritage Committee to look at opportunities to designate down the road, similar to the Grand Avenue Tree Stand. I mean, we knew we had a valuable source of trees there. The other thing which is exciting is that the community has asked, you know, are we going to help them out with some cheap trees? And I like that you said that it might be as part of, explore in 2022 as part of our anniversary year, offering a quantity of trees to residents at a discounted price. So I think it'd be great if there's a way to do that because I'm sensing that people want to plant trees. And I think any way we can help to provide a cost savings to them would be great. So again, thanks for all of your help and Counselor Vardy for putting this forward and how it's just grown into something that the whole community is embracing. And it's like, go, 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 girl, because like Carolyn in capital, here we come. Okay? Congratulations, everybody, on your hard work.
Counselor Cadwell.
Yes, thank you, Mayor Jordan. And yeah, I think this is a great initiative, really happy to see it move forward and great work by the staff. I just have one question and a comment, if I may, to Sarah. Page two of your report where it talks about new tree planting, and it mentions about approximately 300 trees to be planted as a regular operating budget. Now, will the Carolinian, any Carolinian type of trees be included in that program, Sarah? Or is it just where you're mentioning, where you mentioned just including parks, roads, and other open spaces? So yeah, just wondering about that. Then I have a comment. Thank you.
Sure, through you, Mayor Jordan. So for some time, most of the trees we've been planting in our parks have been native species. But we have talked about this, that this tree planting round be native and Carolinian. So we are working on that. Those trees haven't been done yet, so hopefully they will all be from that list. I have to double check what, I know some of its operations. So I do want to double check that they haven't made any commitments, but I can tell you it's definitely being looked at closely. And the vast majority, for sure, will be native Carolinian unless a commitment's been made previous to this, to this report coming through.
Great, yeah. Thank you. And just a comment. I did a little research on this, too, and I found a gentleman in Grimsby, a very reputable resident of Grimsby who has a lot of experience with planting trees and looking after cemeteries. I won't say his name, but yeah, he just gave me some good, interesting points about... Again, I know this is the early part of this initiative, and I think I know our staff will do all the right things. But he just mentioned to me about when you're planting the trees, you want to look at what you have more success with is about a 15-foot tree. So we'd be looking at, say, a tree of, say, 15 feet high or more, looking at saplings. And then he gave, actually, and I'll give you his name, and yeah, he gave me a lot of good information. So yeah, that's my question. Would be down the road, are we looking at the bit of a larger tree you started off planting with? Or maybe saplings, too? Thank you.
Yeah, through you, Mayor Jordan. I would say it depends a little bit. Certainly when we're doing projects like an outreach with the community where we're doing a shared cost initiative, they tend to be smaller trees because you have further reach and impact. In our parks and certainly even along roads, they do tend to go with a larger tree, just as you said. They're a little bit more established. So it depends a little bit on the application. Sometimes it also depends on a funding source. So for example, we've been successful getting TD Tree Planting funding up at Southwood Park, and they actually will do identify the size of the tree for that type of project. So it's really quite a mix as to the types that we plant in different areas.
Yeah, thank you, Sarah. Again, just from a costing perspective, and I know this is back a few years ago when he was involved. I think he mentioned a 15-foot tree is about $400 to $800 roughly, but very, you know, but still, it's a great initiative. So cost is not a, won't be a problem. Thank you.
Thank you.
Counselor Frake.
Thank you, Mayor Jordan. Sarah, great report, great initiative. And certainly, I must admit, I must applaud you and your team for doing such a great job on this whole initiative, which seems to have grown big legs. I just want to say that what you should probably do is maybe we should start coining the phrase now that we're the Carolinian Tree Capital of Canada or Ontario as soon as we possibly can before someone else steals the title. Anyways, what I wanted to do is I wanted to give a bit of a shout out, too, because our Grimsby Beach residents, as last week, put on a birdhouse sale. I don't know if you saw them on Facebook or some of the other social media. Unbelievable job. They got their kids to build these birdhouses, and they're very colorful, almost like the houses, the colorful houses that are down in the beach. And I got to commend them. They raised something like, I think, $2,500. And they want to put that $2,500 towards the Carolinian Tree Initiative. So I'm sure you've connected with them already, but I just wanted to make sure we give them a little bit of an applause because they've done such a great job and they're so committed to this. And so thank you to them, too, and thank you to your staff, and keep plugging away. Get that, get that, get that phrase out there, Carolinian capital. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you.
Mayor Jordan, just quickly comment to that. I did see that on social media, and that's an exciting project. And I've gotten quite a number of calls from residents, some in groups and some individuals. So it's really exciting to see the community, as I said, really embrace this as well because while our whole corporation is very excited about this, really having that... So it's really exciting to see the community, as I said, really embrace this as well, because while our whole corporation is very excited about this, really having that resident piece just takes us to the next level and it really extends the reach of what this what this work can bring. So it's really exciting.
Yeah, it really is nice to see the enthusiasm. Counselor Sharp.
Yeah, thanks, Mayor Jordan. Am I on mute? No, thank you. And to Director Sweeney, I liked the idea that she mentioned about planting saplings, finding your own saplings to be a cool way to get the community involved. So one of the things is like, there's a bit of research to be done. You got to learn what time of year you can collect the seeds. Some of the seeds have to wait until like they have to go through one winter before they get planted. I don't know all about all trees, but it'd be cool if we could form a group who could kind of figure this out and then we could get community members who could participate even through our like Waze Goose thing, like that app, you could pick a tree that you're looking for, you could find that tree, you could collect the seeds, you could plant them and then it's just something that would be fun to do with my kids or other people might do at their home and then grow trees. I mean, I have trees that just grow up in my yard. I have these nut trees, they fall. And like their little saplings grow everywhere. I gotta pull them out of the ground. And here's people that are like, that don't have, want to plant trees. I'm pulling trees out, but so that would be something fun to do and I'd participate in that. That'd be cool to do with our green committee. Thanks.
Definitely. Thank you, Counsel Sharp.
Counsel Vardy.
Yeah, I was just going to suggest that perhaps this summer, if we have camps again, that might be an interesting thing to do with the kids. And to incorporate a little bit of Carolinian education or tree planting or seed gathering as one of their activities.
Yeah, that's a really good idea.
I like that idea, if I if I may, Counsel, or sorry, Mayor Jordan. One thing we've looked at as well is there is Carolinian trees, but there's also Carolinian forest conversation. And so the NPCA again has a wonderful resource. It also talks about plants that are from this area and do best in a Carolinian zone. So it's something else we're exploring and I did touch on this project as well because trees do take some time to grow. But for for children as well, that might be an interesting piece as well as to look at things outside of beyond just the trees and looking at some of the other plantings that we can incorporate as well. A bit of a unique take that we could take upon the the whole Carolinian piece.
Thank you, Sarah. Seeing, well, just one thing about actual, the actual plants, I think actual, actual varieties of ferns that that are native or native or growing in the Carolinian forests, there's over 30 varieties of ferns. So just ferns alone, so. All right, seeing no further questions or comments, moved by Counsel Vardy, second by Counsel Dunstall. Resolve that report DRS 21-08 Carolinian tree plant planting dated April 6, 2021 be received for information. All in favor? That's carried. Up next, we have our phase out of all gas-fired electricity generation. I have Counsel Cadwell as the mover, new seconder. Counsel Sharp. Counsel Cadwell.
Yes, thank you, Mayor Jordan. And I just want to thank staff, working with staff with this notice of motion. And I I look forward to having a supportive counsel to this. I think this is a very important notice of motion that's put forward. Right now, there are approximately, interesting, I read today St. Catherine Standard. And there was an article in the in the first section about phasing out gas-fired electricity and a great article. So I've just got to read a one little paragraph from it. Right now, there's 22 municipalities across Ontario and 63 organizations have endorsed the phase out gas-fired power generation. With with renewable alternatives readily available and low cost, there's no reason to ramp up gas or rebuild old nuclear infrastructure. So again, I think one of people want to, people just to go back a little, little bit in time, one of our first initiatives, initiatives, sorry, as this council is we shut down the Cogen, which was located right beside Town Hall. That was, that had two engines running, fed by natural gas. So I think, you know, like kudos to council, we did the right thing. We were, the overall costs were were about $1.2 million for that 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 initiative. And I'm really glad that we took the steps to to remove that. So anyways, I look forward to a supportive council and there's lots of emails that you can, or different sites, sorry, that you can look at to get information with regards to the to the lead to the the charge, I should say, of getting the province to to shut down these gas-fired electricity. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Counsel Cadwell. Counsel Bothwell.
Thank you, Mayor Jordan. Yes, I've watched this motion go around through a number of municipalities and I think it is a, you know, it's it's something we need to do. We need to be considerate of climate change and the impacts. I was interested to find that only 6% of the energy output, electricity output is gas or oil. The balance, which is the dirtiest for greenhouse gas emissions, the balance is clean and non-emitting GH, GHG energy. So nuclear is 67%, hydro 25%, wind 7%, biofuel like biodigesters less than 1% and solar less than 1% of the energy output by fuel type 2019. That is in an Environmental Defense Canada report chart called Background or Charging Forward. So this is a step, but in that same report, the interesting part about it is that when they close the coal production, they obviously increase natural gas and other types of energy general electricity generating energy sources. But the provincial government also just recently did away with a number of clean energy type of initiatives. So it's it's kind of backtracking and unless we put all those tools back in the toolbox, we're kind of peddling as fast as we can and maybe not getting anywhere. This report mentions the surest way to cut carbon pollution from electricity is to use less of it. Conservation and efficiency programs help people and businesses do that better. So that's replacing older equipment, upgrading builder buildings with power-saving lights, helping consumers shift consumption. So those types of strategies, they say, are even more effective in helping flatten electricity demand. So it's, I think it, we need to look at all those options and we need to ensure that the province also, when we put this motion forward, looks at ways to support communities in initiatives that are are clean, clean and GHG reductions because transportation and buildings, I mean, buildings themselves are generating the highest amount of GHGs. So as I said, it's only a very, very small portion that is gas and oil, 6% of the electricity in energy output that we're that we're dealing with here when it's a much bigger picture. I also want to ensure that the message we're sending is not to maybe replace it with the loss of agricultural lands through, I know solar panels is another source that we're looking at, which is great. It has its own carbon footprint. And it can be, we don't want to do it at the expense of another environmental impact, such as loss of our agricultural or crops for viable agricultural land. That was something that happened in Moundsburg. They were going to put 60,000 solar panels up on, off on Moundsburg Road on 200 acres of farmland that they said they deemed it not class one, two or three. And the farmer said, there's a lot of rocks in it, but it was farmed. So there was a lot of outcry from the community there about that Samsung was going to put those in and they ended up moving somewhere else. So I think we just have to be conscious of what the impacts of the of the alternate choices are if we're going to phase out gas. You know, what are we making it up with and what other environmental impacts and footprints do we have to watch for? So that's just my concern. Thank you.
Counsel Frank.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor Jordan. Yeah, I think this is a good resolution. I would say that looking at the numbers and Counsel Bothwell just mentioned some of them. I would say Ontario is probably one of the most advanced in not using gas. I mean, I think it's like 7% of our electricity comes from gas. I know 60% is nuclear, 24% hydro, 2.4% solar, half a percent bioenergy, 8.7% wind. And there's some others in there as well. So but we're in about the 93% percentile in terms of our electricity. But the thing is, we should probably also be looking at putting in place some guidelines for developers who are coming into town to ensure that they're putting in place in their buildings, some energy efficient buildings like the the glass, you know, the things they they use in the building to make them that much more efficient. And I don't think we have those kind of kind of rules and regulations in place yet. And Counsel Cadwell, that may be a place for us to look to maybe try to change some of our, some of our building standards to ensure that we get, because that's a lot of energy. As Counsel Bothwell said, there's a lot of energy used up in putting those buildings up and then to maintain them going forward. So that's one place where we could really make a difference is becoming an eco-friendly, a, you know, you know, community for for building and development. So there's something you might want to maybe chase down. Thank you.
Counsel Vardy.
Yes, thank you. I just, I just want to build a little bit on what Counsel Frank has said in that I really think we need to look at our our standards with respect to parking in new developments. In that, as as we're moving to a commitment to more electric cars, we need, we need to perhaps ensure that, you know, of X number of parking spaces in any building are allotted to electric cars so that they they have installed in them the the means for people to recharge their cars within their parking garage. So I think we need to really take a look at at our whole development standards to see, you know, how do we make them eco-friendly and and supportive of the directions we're going in the future. Thank you.
Counsel Cadwell.
Yes, thank you, Mayor Jordan, and thank you to the counselors for your comments in that. Good points taken. Just in the article, they also mentioned the IESO reports and what they're really trying to promote is the is getting hydro from Quebec water power. Niagara Falls, I have some friends that work in that Ontario Hydro. And Niagara Falls is not running at near the capacity it should be. The transmission lines are already, they're, they are capable of taking water power, electricity from Quebec, which would be very cheap and very efficient too. So I, I mean, this, this is, these are all good comments and good ideas, but this is something we have to be talking to our MPPs about, to the, to the provincial government to support the movement of getting rid of the gas-fired electricity and look at the better options to it too. And I'll, I'll just end it on that. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Cadwell. Counsel Bothwell.
Thanks again, Mayor Jordan. Just a quick recap on that, Counsel Cadwell, from what I was reading, the provincial government was not willing to put an MOU in place with Quebec. So there's been a lot of pushback on that with respect to that agreement on on the hydro. So I think if it's a good idea, yeah, if you want to pursue it through lobbying our provincial officials to to go back and revisit that, that would be a good thing. But everything I've read so far is that they were not receptive of that type of an MOU. So be good to reopen that conversation. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Bothwell. Counsel Cadwell, I just have one question for you. In Niagara Falls, you said that they're, they're not running at capacity. Do you know if there's plans to increase capacity? I know Canadian Power Generation is opening up a new attraction and a tour of that generation, generating facility at the falls. But I just wondered if you, if you know if there's a timeframe where they are going to increase their capacity again. Thanks.
I don't know right offhand, but I was told that even the the tunnel that they put in from Niagara on the lake to feed to feed the power plants in Niagara Falls, it's only running at half capacity because of the of the wind turbines and those, those types of energy, green energy that's being used. So Niagara Falls has been an electrical engineer explained it all to me and he basically told me that they flipped the grid. So they're using more of the wind power and the green energy powers. And so that, that's the last comments I received in the conversation with the gentleman a while back. So but yeah, we can, we can move forward, look into more, more ideas to this. Thank you.
Great. Thank you very much. Seeing no further questions or comments, moved by Counsel Cadwell, second by Counsel Sharp. Whereas the government of Ontario is planning to increase greenhouse gas GHG emissions from Ontario's gas-fired power plants by more than 300% by 2030 and 500 or more by 2040, reversing more than 40% of the GHG reductions that were achieved by phasing out coal-fired power plants. And whereas GHG emissions are causing temperatures to rise in Canada at more than double the rate of the rest of the world, causing impacts to municipal operations and affecting the town of Grimsby residents. And whereas municipalities amount account for 50% of global emissions, thus necessitating further action by all sectors and other levels of government. And whereas council strategic priorities have committed the town of Grimsby to taking actions to ensure protection of the natural environment. And whereas a number of municipalities are supporting a call for the phase out of gas-fired power plants by the year 2030, therefore be it resolved that the town of Grimsby write to the Ministry of Municipal Affairs and Housing and the Minister of the Environment, Conservation, Energy and Parks to request that the government of Ontario develop and implement a plan to phase out all gas-fired electricity generation by 2030. And that the resolution be sent to the Minister of Environment, Conservation and Parks, the Minister of Energy, Northern Development and Mines, Grimsby MPP and Ontario Premier Doug Ford as proposed by the Ontario Clean Air Alliance. All in favor? That's carried. Up next, we have the report, our delegation 12.1A Presentation Downtown Reimagined, Ashley McCallum. Welcome, Ashley. It's your first time here. Nice to see you.
Thanks. Good evening, Mayor. Oh, is the is the slideshow up?
We're going to give you the controls, Ashley, for the slideshow.
Thank you. Can you, can you see it? Is it up? I don't see it on my end. Oh, there it goes. Okay, thank you. Good evening, Mayor, members of council and community members. My name is Ashley McCallum and I'm an engineering technologist in the Public Works Department. It's my pleasure to be here this evening to share with you the launch of the Downtown Reimagined project. I'd like to thank Antonetta for working with me and mentoring me over the last few months as together we have spent time designing the phases of work for the project, creating a project charter and working hard to bring this exciting project to life. As we move through the project phases, we will be working closely with Sarah Sweeney and Brandon Wardman to advance this project in a collaborative and impactful manner. Next slide. Thank you. In 2009, the town stakeholder agencies and community groups came together to create the Grimsby Downtown Master Plan, the Downtown Design Guidelines and the Community Improvement Plan documents. During the development of these documents, community During the development of these documents, community engagement sessions were held with over four hundred participants. Since these documents were created twelve years ago, we think it's the right time to reengage with our community and dream about the downtown and to update these critical documents with current feedback. Knowing that we have a strong foundation to build from means that we can move this project forward in a timely and collaborative fashion. Given that staff have been planning the new water main project for downtown, this infrastructure project is an opportunity to both reimagine downtown Grimsby all the while advancing council's strategic priorities. Next slide. The next thing we did to mobilize this project was to analyze this term of council's strategic priorities. In a direct way or indirect way, this project contributes to all of town council's strategic priorities. Needless to say, this is an exciting project for town staff, council and the community at large. Perhaps more importantly, this project will provide many meaningful positive impacts for the town of Grimsby and its residents. Next slide. To give you a sense of where the area focuses, the project limits are centered on Main Street from Christie Street and Mountain Street to the west and Elm Street to the east. Next slide. As you all know, we have a wonderful downtown and we want to build on that with any work that we propose going forward. Just to name a few, here are some key positives of our downtown. It's pedestrian scaled, centrally located and has a strong built form character and small town atmosphere. As we build on those positive features, we will be taking a look at some items, including gateway features, street improvements, including a way to move people in all modes and abilities, public spaces, municipal parking areas and wayfinding signage. Fundamental to all of our work will be broad-based community engagement. Next slide. Building on the engagement we've been speaking about, our work has begun to identify the project stakeholders and community groups that we will be talking to such as Niagara Region Urban Planning, Transportation and Public Health Departments, Committees of Council, external committees, including the DIA Farmers Market Happening in Grimsby Festival Committee, the Chamber of Commerce, Indigenous Community, utility companies, including Grimsby Power, Kojiko, Bell, Embridge and NRBN, the local schools whose students and parents walk through the downtown like Saint Joseph's Elementary School, BT Secondary School, Central Public School, GSS and Trail Ridge Montessori School and all residents and visitors. This is not an exhaustive list and as we move through the process, we remain open to including as many voices as we can in the conversations. Next slide. We are in phase one of the project, which includes public engagement and updating the visioning materials. Phase two will be detailed design of a made in Grimsby complete streetscape and phase three will be construction and implementation. Right now, we plan to create an RFP and retain a consultant to update the Grimsby master plan and downtown design guidelines. To create a public and stakeholder engagement strategy, which will utilize Let's Talk Grimsby. Redefine the vision, identify gaps from the two thousand nine documents, refresh the design guidelines from public and stakeholder engagement feedback and coordinate with Niagara region regarding design and multi-year funding opportunities through the Public Realm Investment Program. We're also working with the local artists to create branding for the project to ensure that the project benefits from brand recognition and resonates with the community. Next slide. Our goals moving forward are to continue to build on downtown Grimsby's strengths, engage the community in a meaningful way, leverage existing partnerships and create new partnerships in order to advance this project in a truly collaborative and innovative fashion. This project is also promising as it will act as, as it will be able to act as a key component of a COVID recovery strategy for our community. We look forward to collaborating with all of the stakeholders and bringing forward updates to council as we move along. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your presentation, Ashley. Councillor, any questions? Councillor Bothwell.
Thank you, Mayor Jordan. It sounds like, you know, it's a great initiative. We've got the money and the budget to start this project. I appreciate the, the different stages of engagement that we're going to go through and that the CIP and the master plan for downtown are from two thousand and nine and and need to have that recognition and updating. I just wonder, Ashley, the circle of the defined area, is that flexible? Just because I think we might be restricting ourselves. I know the downtown is the downtown, but in our official plan and in the CIP documents, a lot of the, the other, the area down Ontario Street and the businesses down Ontario Street, just a little further are also identified in those plans as in some strategies for them. So I just wonder if there's a way, like if we look at this, does it have to be a circle or can we extend the boundary down Ontario Street a bit? And I think that might also take into play the DIAs envision of of their idea of some, some different strategies down Ontario Street. I just think we're limiting ourself within this circle. We at the CIP and downtown master plan, urban design guidelines have different also cover those different areas down Ontario and in the downtown transition areas. Thank you.
Antonetta, I see your hand up. Did you want to comment on that?
Yes, through you, Mr. Mayor, I'll just answer the question. Thank you, councillor Bothwell. Yes, the circle is flexible. If you look at the original documents, it identified the core district as the area and that was the area that we focused in on. As well as we have the parameters of the water main project itself, but certainly if it makes sense. And if the community wants it and we can accommodate it with the budget, we are very open to looking at other areas of the downtown and not only other geographies attached to that circle, but connections between the downtown and key areas in the town.
Thank you, Antonette. Councillor Frake.
Thank you, Mayor Jordan. Thank you, Ashley, for your, your, your presentation. One of the reasons why I ran for election a couple of years ago was because I wanted to see our downtown take some shape and and grow and become very progressive and see some dynamite, dynamite things downtown that that became a which which would make Grimsby a place to go to. And I'm glad to see that we've, we've endorsed that and we're moving forward on that. I I do agree with councillor Bothwell that maybe that circle should be a little rounder, a little wider, maybe, maybe it should be a square, I don't know, a rectangle. But it isn't, it isn't just us as a council or as a town that's going to be investing in that area. There are some developers, I'm sure that we can hopefully encourage to build some nice things around that area, whether it be Ontario Street or Elm or along, or maybe, you know, spruce up some of the the storefronts and maybe some of the merchants downtown. So I'm sure that's all part of your overall plan. But yeah, I just make sure that we engage the DIA because they're closer to the merchants than anybody else. And and they're also have a bit of a knowledge about who would be interested in developing the downtown. So I think we need to work close to them too. So I'm excited about this. It's great. Let's move it forward. Let's not waste any time. And thank you for the presentation.
Thank you.
Again, thank you very much, Ashley, for the presentation. Oh, councillor Dunstall, councillor Dunstall, go ahead.
Sorry, I'm a little slow tonight. I I'm really excited to see us bring this back. I was around, I was in the chamber at the time, but I remember going to some of those meetings and, and the the information that's in there is, is really good. I would imagine some of it's out of date now, so it's makes sense to hire a consultant and look at that. And I would agree that circle's a little tight, even, you know, a little further east up to Robinson. There's a lot of a retail there along both sides of the street that should be included. So and I think that's what will happen as we go through this. But oh, this is very exciting and I hope some of the things that were suggested in the first CIP come, come, come to fruition because there were some really good ideas. So I'll keep my fingers crossed. I won't say what they were because let's see what happens. I think councillor Cadwell can remember it too. Thank you.
Councillor Cadwell.
Yes, thanks, Mayor Jordan, and thank you, Ashley and Antonetta, with your support there. Great report. Because it's good that we have a plan in place and because when the construction starts, it's going to be, it's going to be messy. It is so. But it's, but I think the the business people, when they see this and notice that there is, there's a vision, there's a, there's a big light at the end of the tunnel. Because the construction is going to be a very tough time, but with the plan, with the plans of a, of a moving forward with this, this type of change of the downtown, all positive. So thank you very much for your work, work that you put into it and looking forward to, to moving forward. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Cadwell. Seeing no more of the comments or questions. We need a mover and seconder to receive the report. Moved by councillor Dunstall, second by councillor Vardy. Moved by councillor Dunstall, second by councillor Vardy, resulted in the downtown reimagine presentation be received. All in favor? That's carried. Up next, we have our notice of motion from last week. Regarding this, this one. Yep, regarding chickens, councillor Sharp, I have you as the mover. And a new seconder, get it on the table, councillor Vane. Councillor Sharp.
Yeah, thanks, Mayor Jordan. What I'm asking for today is, is not a decision on our bylaws. What I'm asking for is a decision on initiating a survey on Let's Talk Grimsby and a report from town staff. I have had requests from multiple residents in my ward and in other wards if backyard chickens could be allowed in Grimsby. I posted on social media and got over five thousand reached in one day and eighteen hundred engagements, one hundred and twenty-seven comments, some in favor and some opposing. Needless to say, it is a subject that residents have an opinion about. But while social media is an effective tool for communicating an idea, it is not as effective at surveying the results. So what I'm asking for today is about engaging residents in a real discussion on our platform, letstalkgrimsby.ca and getting meaningful feedback from the people who actually live in Grimsby and not just Facebook likes. Today is not about debating whether or not backyard chickens could or should be allowed. So what I ask is that we focus the debate on should we engage with the residents in a survey on a subject that they have shown interest in on both sides. And I think the answer is yes. Later, we will have time to debate whether or not backyard chickens could be allowed, but only after we've heard from the residents that we represent. I appreciate your support in initiating this public engagement. Thank you.
Councillor Bothwell.
Thank you, Mayor Jordan. I appreciate the, the intent behind councillor Sharp's motion. I'm just a little bit concerned that staff are we have a lot of pressure put on them right now with COVID and with a lot of things that they have on their plate with the referred matters list. And in fact, there's a, there's a bylaw review process that I introduced in October of twenty nineteen, twenty twenty, sorry, it's been six months now. It's been moved again to Q two. Where bylaws that have been outdated for twenty years or so, we actually bring them forward and get them reviewed. One of them was the noise bylaw, which got defeated, but this is to have the, the key bylaws brought back and staff were working on those priorities as well as the property standards committee appointment, which we're, we've neglected that we don't have that in place right now. So my, my feeling is that staff have a lot of work to do with that. The bylaws that they currently have in place that are outdated and need refinement and being brought back forward and we need that priority list that we're waiting for. And I'd like to see that, you know, that they, they have the time to focus their, their attention to that. So I'm asking that we defer this motion to Q four or until the resolute, the bylaw review process has been completed. So if I could put forward a motion to defer councillor Sharp's motion to Q four or until the bylaw review process has been completed, then I think that would be giving staff appropriate time and, and attention to some of the priorities we've got on the plate right now. So a defer motion, I believe, takes precedence over the main motion. So I'll leave that with the clerk.
Thank you, councillor Bothwell. The motion to defer is on the floor now. So, well, is there a seconder for the motion to defer? Councillor Frake, I see you've seconded.
Could I ask for staff's input about the schedule that it would require to, to? So I've talked to staff about creating this, like I didn't just come up with this on my own. And we have a platform, letstalkgrimsby.ca and we have the
Councillor Sharp, the motion to defer is on the floor, so.
So, so I'm asking if first the motion to defer is with regard to staff time and staff commitment. I'm asking for staff's input on, on their ability to engage the public through Let's Talk Grimsby.
Yeah, that, first, we have the motion to defer, so. Moved by councillor Bothwell, second by councillor Frake, resolved that the item regarding
That's with regard to the
be deferred. Recorded vote by councillor Bothwell.
Mayor Jordan, could I ask when we're deferring it to? Because I think councillor Bothwell had suggested Q four.
She suggested Q four.
Yeah. Can we put that in there?
Yep.
For completion of the bylaw review process, whatever comes first.
So since the deferral is with regard to staff time and staff management of the time, can I ask staff to give us input about their time?
So. Councillor Bothwell, could you just give me the last couple of things? Completion of the bylaw review, was that it?
So that it be deferred to Q four
Four.
of the bylaw review process.
Okay.
Thank you.
Mayor Jordan, that'd be a point of order. You'd have to put in a specific time. You can't say depending upon something else.
So Q four or the completion of the
Depending something else.
Q four, period.
Sure. That makes it easier. All right, so I'll read it again. Moved by councillor Bothwell, second by councillor Frake, resolved that the item regarding chickens be deferred to Q four. And that's a recorded vote.
Mayor Jordan, point of order again. I do think councillor Sharp wanted to know about the postponement and the motion to defer is debatable as to the visibility of postponement. So if he's asking staff a question, I think he should be allowed to.
All right. Thank you, councillor Ritchie. Staff, who would like to comment on that?
If I could, just my question to staff would be how much does it take to engage the community about something like this? Especially with our new, like, we've spent money on this, Let's Talk Grimsby. And so I know councillor Bothwell has suggested that we don't have time. Can, can I have staff's input? And I think that we should make use of the, of the platform that we have.
Through you, Mr. Mayor, I can try and help out and answer this question.
Thank you. Thank you, Antonetta.
So first, I'll acknowledge by saying it is a joint project that would cross several divisions and areas to work on it properly and make sure that, you know, we moved forward well. So I don't want to speak, you know, on behalf of some of my colleagues, but as for what would affect the planning team and using the Let's Talk Grimsby platform as well as the bylaw team. We have looked initially when this motion came forward to some municipalities and we found one who used Let's Talk it for their municipality, but the Bang the Table platform. And they used it very effectively to do an exact sort of canvassing of their community and we liked what they did. And so we would likely model it after that. So the actual creation of the questions and having it run on Bang the Table through Let's Talk Grimsby shouldn't be too onerous. That said, I do take councillor Bothwell onerous. That said, I do take Counselor Bothwell's point. We have a series of bylaws that we need to look through and I can speak to the bylaw team if needed and see where this would fall in terms of timing and priorities. But in terms of the actual engagement, because the questions have already been designed and they were done very well by another Niagara municipality, we would likely mimic that with minor modifications. And so we could do the engagement portion relatively quickly. It might be the work that follows that that might take some more time to bring back to council. I hope that helps.
So would we be amenable to doing the engagement and postponing the report rather than not engaging the community? Would you be amenable to withdraw the deferral motion if I amended my motion to request that staff engage the community and that they bring and that they let council know when they can prepare the report, maybe by Q4? It's the best of both worlds. I've had a lot of residents from our ward and from other wards in Grimsby who they want to be heard about this. They want to talk. There's a lot of people who don't want chickens. A lot of people who do want chickens. Some people on the mountain. Some people in the more urban areas, but would you be amenable to withdrawing the deferral motion if we, if I amended the motion to for staff to engage on Let's Talk Grimsby? And then to to make the report when possible?
Sorry, Counselor Sharp.
Counselor Bothwell.
Thank you, Mayor Jordan. Sorry for you. No, because I feel that I'd like to see the priority on the bylaw review process. And I think that Q4, October, beginning of October, doing it in pieces to me is disruptive to staff and it kind of throws the community off too. If you start a process and then you delay it for three months. So I just would like to see the focus on some of the other outstanding items in the referral list. And I think that tying this in together, it is asking staff to do significant research on regulations, which is legal involved and research with other municipalities. So it will, I expect it will take some time cross-departmental to put reports together that are fulsome and complete. So I think to do due diligence, I would not be willing to split it up into two. Sorry, no.
Okay.
Yes, Counselor Sharp. Counselor Sharp, I am the chair. So crosstalk, I'm not, just not going to allow, but just commenting on Counselor Bothwell and the number of different reports that have been deferred. And we look at something like the whistleblower. It was deferred for, took almost a year and now it's back to staff again. So we do have a lot of work on our plate. I know several council members have said that staff do have a lot of their plates and I want a fulsome review of chickens and I want as much public openness and transparency and I want them to have their say, but I'd like to do it all at once in an organized fashion. And I think moving some of these other things forward, I think is the right thing to do. So we have a deferral motion on the floor now.
Mayor Jordan, can I ask for a recorded vote?
Counselor Bothwell has already asked for a recorded vote, so.
Counselor Bothwell?
Yes.
Counselor Dunstall?
Yes.
Counselor Frake?
Yes.
Counselor Cadwell?
Yes.
Counselor Ritchie?
No.
Counselor Sharp?
No.
Counselor Vane?
No.
Counselor Vardy?
Yes.
Mayor Jordan?
Yes.
That's carried.
Now we move to correspondence. We're going to do the separate one first. All right. Need a mover and seconder for the endorsement of April 24th as Great Lake Watershed Cleanup Day. So I see Counselor Bothwell as a mover. And Counselor Sharp, did you want to second that?
I'm sorry, I don't know where, you lost me.
It's the, it's April 24th is hereby proclaimed as Great Lakes Watershed Cleanup Day. I know you talked about it against the green, so I just wanted to know if you want to second that.
Sure.
All right. So discussion, Counselor Bothwell.
Thank you, Mayor Jordan. This is a great initiative that's put on by both the chambers, Lincoln and Grimsby, sorry, the Rotary Clubs. I think that what I'd like to do is do a shout out to the developers and the businesses to also look at participating in this event or sending staff to help participate in this event because we find that a lot of the the issues in our watershed and especially down here in the West End is due to some of the development and the debris that comes off of those sites. And it's collecting in our creeks and our waterways and along the lake. So I'd like to just reach out and say, some of those are developers here in town, DeSantis, Losani, Azure, Mars. You guys, if you want to come out and help support cleaning up our community, I think this is a great way to show support and send some of your people out there and help participate. Same with the superstore and some of our larger businesses and the food chains that have a lot of their debris that ends up in our creeks and in our open areas. Think about helping out and showing some stewardship to the community through this initiative. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Bothwell. Counselor Sharp.
Thanks, Mayor Jordan. So on April 24th, which is a Saturday, they're doing a Great Lake Watershed Cleanup. And this is happening in Grimsby and Lincoln, but so I'm volunteering for, we've been cleaning up the Forty Mile Creek, the group of residents. We've kind of revived it, a group, an older group called the Friends of the Forty. And so we're kind of spearheading a cleanup of the creek. We've divided it into four sections, A, B, C, and D. A is up by Food Basics. B is kind of behind RE/MAX. C is like under the highway and D is over by the pump house. And we're looking for five volunteers per group. And that's through the Rotary Club. And so they have a website that they are, I'm not sure if they've launched it yet, but they're about to launch a website where you can go on and volunteer. And then there'll be like a group leader and it's all pre-approved through Public Health and they've done, they've got some rules on their website, but I'm definitely very involved in that. And if you want, I don't know if the website's live yet, but if you want to participate in this watershed cleanup and specifically Forty Mile Creek, you can contact me via my email address, dsharp@grimsby.ca. And I can put you in touch with the people at Rotary or directly I can help you find a way to participate. So I'm really looking forward to the cleanup on April 24th. It's a great way to get outside. We won't spend more than an hour or two. And if you're interested, please get in touch with me. And I would suggest maybe other counselors, if they're interested, they could too. Thanks.
Counselor Dunstall.
Thank you, Your Worship. This is a great initiative. I know the president of the Rotary very well. She's a very dynamic individual and I support this wholeheartedly. The only thing I wanted to mention is that as early as maybe tomorrow, we might be locked down again with a stay-at-home order. Now, would this, would this have any impact on this date of the 24th? Is that advisable that we get groups of people together and fives? I don't know. It's just, we're in the middle of a pandemic and it's not getting any better at this point in time. It's, things are getting worse before it gets better. So I'm wondering if they might have an alternative date if that becomes a problem.
Counselor Sharp, did you want to comment on that?
Yeah, I do. So I don't want to speak for the Rotary, but I know that when I did speak to the Rotary, they wanted to limit it to groups of five because of the provincial guidelines, if we go back into gray, which we're in right now. And I also wanted to comment that the Friends of the Forty, we did a cleanup behind RE/MAX on that trail. We did it during the stay-at-home order and with following the regulations, they said that you couldn't be in groups of more than five. It was only a group of three. And we were separate, like the only contact we had was that we shared one box of garbage bags that we set up at the top of the path. And each person goes and picks up a garbage bag and then they spend an hour walking by themselves, picking up garbage. And so there is five people, but it's not really like a hold hands and pick up garbage kind of thing. It's more of like five people disperse to cover an area. I mean, you're 100 yards away from each other. It's not a real risk, but I know the Rotary has had some thought about that and they actually have a plan approved by Public Health. So it'd be better to talk to Liz about the exact details, but I think that they've planned for that.
Thank you, Counselor Sharp. Just with April 24th, I think it's a great initiative and with April 22nd being Earth Day, I think it's just the whole week is good for every resident in town to actually be aware of areas where there's garbage and especially with your recycling bins. If it is windy out, either secure your recycling down or use one of the clear plastic bags. I certainly know that works really well for me up on the escarpment on windy days. So seeing no further comments, I'm sure Rotary will be giving updates if we do turn to lockdown. And I know I have a regional council meeting on Thursday, so we may find some more information from there. I will certainly send an email around. Moved by Counselor Bothwell, second by Counselor Sharp. Resulted that April 24th is hereby proclaimed as Great Lakes Watershed Cleanup Day in the town of Grimsby and the town joins the Rotary Club of Grimsby and Rotary District 7090 in encouraging its citizens to participate in area-wide watersheds cleanup efforts within the town of Grimsby and the West Niagara area. All in favor? That's carried. Up next, we have the rest of the correspondence. Need a mover and seconder. Moved by Counselor Vardy, second by Counselor Dunstall. Moved by Counselor Vardy, second by Counselor Dunstall. Resulted correspondence under Administration and Finance with reference to amendments to orders under Reopening Ontario, a flexible response to COVID-19 Act 2020, amendments to orders under Reopening Ontario, a flexible response to COVID Act 19, or COVID-19 Act, capacity limit changes for some events in gray lockdown phase one, COVID vaccination plan for frontline emergency personnel and new COVID border testing orders, phase one COVID-19 vaccinations for frontline police officers, region of Niagara, 2021 Niagara employment inventory status update be received. All in favor? That's carried. Our next meeting, Committee of the Whole is scheduled for Monday, April 19th, 2021 at 6:30 PM. And Counselor Cadwell, you had a question?
Yes, I do, Mayor Jordan. Just in the agenda, it has item number seven, Regional Counselor Update. Just wondering if we're going to get that.
The regional counselor is not giving an update tonight. Sorry, I didn't mention that earlier, but Counselor Furtick is not giving an update tonight. So with that, before I adjourn, we will meet back for a regular committee meeting in 10 minutes. So meeting is adjourned to you at regular committee in 10 minutes. Thank you. In ten minutes, uh, so meeting is adjourned, uh, to you at a regular committee in ten minutes. Thank you. In ten minutes, uh, so meeting is adjourned, uh, to you at a regular committee in ten minutes. Thank you. In ten minutes, uh, so meeting is adjourned, uh, to you at a regular committee in ten minutes. Thank you. Okay. Next, are there any disclosures of pecuniary interest? Seeing none, uh, before we approve the agenda, I just have a, an announcement. On behalf of council, I'd like to welcome our new interim director of finance slash treasurer, Melanie Steele. Melanie has spent the last ten years of her career working for the Niagara region and has. Held various roles in finance during her tenure, most recently the associate director of reporting and analysis. She has led a team of dedicated finance professionals in all internal and external financial reporting. Activities, financial audits, budget development, government reporting, and most importantly, providing leaders. With strong financial analyses to inform their decision weight making. So uh, Melanie, welcome to the Town of Grinsby and we wish you all the best uh. During your time at Town Hall. Welcome, Melanie.
Thank you very much, Mayor Jordan, for the warm welcome and thank you to council for uh, receiving me. I look forward to working with the team. And supporting the town's financial needs as we move forward.
Thank you. Now we move to approval of the agenda. Counselor Bothwell?
Uh, just a point of clarification on the agenda. There was an item posted earlier today. Um, which was the aired and Burles report on my information request that uh. Uh, with respect to the mayor and whether or not the thirteen oh two. Fell under the municipal act and that decision was that, no, it was, it was not within the scope of the municipal act and it seems to have been removed and yet it was in the. Domain. It was out in the public domain for.
Committee of the whole, Mr. Mayor?
I believe it was on council. Uh, I'm not, you know, maybe the clerk can clarify, but it seems to have disappeared totally from our agenda this evening.
Sarah?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. It was in committee of the whole under amend and finance consent, uh, item eight point one C. It was never lifted?
Over.
Thank you.
Um, up next, seeing no changes to the agenda, um. We have, uh. Sarah, you're gonna give us a clarification on the committee of the whole resolution?
Yes. Through you, Mr. Mayor. Sorry, thank you. Through you, Mr. Mayor. Yes, this is a quick uh, housekeeping matter. There was a motion passed at the Heritage Committee. And then at the subsequent committee of the whole meeting, a different motion was passed as uh. Four properties identified needed to be removed from the mass inclusion list. So just to ensure all accuracies on our motion, we do recommend that the Heritage Committee resolution be amended to support the resolution from. March twenty ninth, as per the memorandum.
Thank you, Sarah. Oh, no one else's hand, John. Moving to adoption of previ-
Sorry, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Councilor Vardy, go ahead.
Uh, I wonder if uh. If perhaps, uh, Sarah could give us. Uh, a quick synopsis of the impact of that, uh, aired Burles report. Because I think it's really important that the community understand.
Your point of order.
Yeah, uh, uh, Councilor Vardy, uh, I guess you'll have to uh, bring it up um, at the next council meeting um. And lift it from the uh, committee of the whole minutes before they're approved.
I'll certainly do that. Thank you.
Yeah. Alright, need a mover and seconder uh. For the adoption of previous minutes. Oh, what? Okay, the clarification. Oh, first, uh, the heritage clarification needs a mover and seconder for approval. Counselor Dunstall, Counselor Bothwell. Moved by Counselor Dunstall, second by Counselor Bothwell, resolved that the memo dated April sixth, twenty twenty one. Regarding clarification on committee of the whole resolutions related to municipal heritage register update from March twenty second, twenty twenty one and the twenty nine. And twenty ninth, twenty twenty one be received and that the committee of the whole minutes of March twenty second, twenty twenty one related to item C W. Twenty one dash seventy five being Heritage Grinsby Advisory Committee Council Endorsement Package dated March twenty second, twenty twenty one in regard to. Item number two be approved that has further revised to support the resolution from March twenty ninth, twenty twenty one. All in favor? That's carried. And we move to the minutes. Alright, I need a mover and seconder for the approval of the agenda. Counselor Dunstall. And seconder. Counselor Vardy. Move by Counselor Dunstall, second by Counselor Vardy, resolve the agenda for the council meeting of April sixth, twenty twenty one be approved. All in favor? That's carried. Need a mover and seconder for approval of uh, minutes. Counselor Dunstall move, Counselor Sharp seconded. Move by Counselor Dunstall, second by Counselor Sharp, resolve that the committee of the whole minutes of March twenty second, twenty twenty one and March twenty ninth, twenty. Twenty one be approved and the council minutes of March twenty second, twenty twenty one and April first, twenty twenty one be approved. All in favor? That's carried. Need a mover and seconder for uh, first reading of the bylaws. Move by Counselor Richie, second by. Counselor Dunstall. Move by Counselor Richie, second by Counselor Dunstall, resolve be leave be given to introduce bylaws twenty one dash seventeen. And twenty one dash twenty to twenty one dash twenty two inclusive and that same be read a first time. All in favor? That's carried. Need a mover and seconder for second and third reading of the bylaws. Move by Counselor Richie, second by Counselor Cadwell. Move by Counselor Richie, second by Counselor Cadwell, resolve that leave be given to introduce bylaw twenty one dash seventeen, twenty one. Dash twenty and to twenty one dash twenty two. Inclusive, read a first time, be now read a second and third time and finally pass in the mayor and town clerk to sign and seal the same and rule. Counsel to the contrary notwithstanding. All in favor? That's carried. Up next, we have announcements. Counselor, Counselor Bothwell, I got your hand up.
I think it was, thank you, Mayor Jordan, between Counselor Vardy and myself. It was a split second there with the hand up, so I'll just. Because uh, council, uh, regional councillor Furtick isn't um, speaking tonight, I'm just gonna do a plug for his um. Town Hall with regional councillors tomorrow, April the seventh at twelve thirty to one thirty. Um, it is sponsored by the um. The West Niagara Chamber of Commerce, they're hosting it and you can go online. It's with uh, councillor Furtick, Rob Foster and Albert Whitte-Whitteveen and there is. Some, some representatives from the region there as well. So for those interested, uh, you can go on to Facebook or on to the Grimsby Chamber. Dot com and register for that town hall. And um, just looking forward to what the Grimsby Green Committee is gonna do during Earth Week. So keep your eye out with uh, Director Sweeney doing a whole lot of goose chase and other fun stuff. There'll be a lot of Earth Week activities um. For the community participate in. Thank you.
You, Counselor Bothwell, Counselor Vardy.
Thank you very much, uh, through you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, I guess there's just a, a couple of things that I, that I wanna talk about and uh. Some councillors uh, stole my thunder a little bit, uh, a bit earlier. Um, I did wanna give a shout out to the uh, Grimsby Garden Club with their Carolinian Tree Initiative. I'm so excited about that. I, I can't wait to get down there and uh, see what they've got and see what I can, what I can bring home for my home and uh. It's just great to see everybody get on board. Um, the second thing I wanted to mention is the uh. The Grimsby Beach Carolinian Initiative, uh, led by Kate Sharrow, uh, with those amazing birdhouses. Uh, and uh, you know, uh, you may not know, but I purchased one for my husband's birthday. And um, and I know that Counselor Frank also uh, purchased one, so I think that's um. That's great. They, they, and they really do remind me of the, the, these little birdhouses look like the, the cottages down by the Grimsby Beach, so. That's wonderful. Uh, and, and finally, I, I think the last thing I'd like to say is um. Over this past week, um, we've seen a departure of several staff. Um, Stephen Greniger, Sonia Bovan, Noreen Broome. Richard Sparham and Katerina Bohar. And I just want to thank them all for the amazing work that they've done and the commitment. That they showed to the town of Grinsby and to their work. And uh, to tell them that they will be sorely, sorely missed and uh. I, I'm, I'm just very, very disappointed uh, that they're not with us anymore, so wish them all the best. that they're not with us anymore. So wish them all the best in whatever their new endeavors are. Thank you.
Seeing no other further announcements. I guess we'll, Earth Day is coming up on April 22nd, so we will be able to to announce it on April, our April 19th meeting. Councillor Vane, did you have your hand up?
I just wanted to very quickly talk about the Niagara Road Landfill Citizens Liaison Committee, which I attended on your behalf.
Oh, great.
Just to, just a couple of very minor things. Are you going to have to add something? Because I didn't want to, you know, bother them to explain everything in detail to me, but the landfill operation, they're actually looking at doing real-time updates on lineups because apparently they get very busy between 10 and 3, so they're hoping to do some kind of a real-time update online to let people know. The other issues that I thought were important were the pump station upgrades. They've apparently added chemicals to reduce odors, and I know this was an issue down down at the bottom of Ward 3 there. We had some concerns about that. Now, these two issues, I wasn't aware, but I made a note of them because I figured you might be able to add to it. The capstone replacement was completed, and the scale house addition was completed. So like I said, I didn't want to bother them and have them explain in great detail what that was about, but I figured I'd bring it forward just in case there was something of importance. And before you mention that, let me just say the one last thing is, is there's been a tremendous amount of increase in the amount of drywall, electronics, mattresses, hard plastics, porcelain, scrap metal, tires and bikes. And there's been a decrease in other areas too. So they say this is average, that it goes up and down every year, so. But yeah, as far as the capstone and the scale house, I'll leave that to you if you have any comments on that.
Yeah, Regional Road 12 landfill site is constantly working at updating and improving facilities, and I know the scale house was improved. And the scale was improved as well. And as far as materials going to the sites, a number the recycling stream is doing really well, and staff there, they have extra staff this, right now, due to COVID. Just so they get people moving to recycling their products as quickly and efficiently and as safely as possible. And as, as far as the lineups, Saturdays are really bad for lineups. As our Tuesdays, when, because the landfills closed on Sunday and Monday, Tuesdays tend to be busy as well, but it just seems like spring is a very busy time of year at the landfill, so I really am happy. I know that at previous meetings, they were thinking of initiating the real-time updates on their website, and I think it's through the regional waste app. So that, that is something good to hear from. They can't get that up and running fast enough because I certainly know people idling in their vehicles is certainly not good for the environment. Councillor Cadwell? Councillor Cadwell, I think you're muted.
There we go. I was worried about taking my hand down. Yeah, thank you. I just, if you could maybe pass on some information, I think it was around maybe late 2019 or, or 2020. The region spent some money upgrading their pumps for the Liche. Any, I, I heard it was around $9 million. Can you verify that at all, Mayor? It was quite a, quite a, I guess it was obviously a need because when I was on the committee, there was some discussion on that, so I just, I was just curious to what that cost, and I just have one other question too. Thank you.
Yeah, I, I think the cost was somewhere around $9 million for the pump update or, and overhaul, and it is working a lot better now and much more efficient. And Councillor Furtick, he, it looks like he signed off, but he will certainly be able to update you as the Vice Chair of Public Works on the region, so everything Public Works, Councillor Furtick will cover.
Yeah, what about, is Andrew Winter still in charge of the Road 12 landfill? Is he still involved? Because I went on the regional website, and I wasn't, I couldn't get a good, a strong clarification, but is he still in charge, Mayor?
I can't answer that right now. I'm not sure, but I will get back to you on that. I will contact Regional Councillor Furtick and-
Yeah, I appreciate that.
Yep.
Ran the meetings back then, but anyways, thank you.
All right. Seeing no further announcements. Our next meeting of councils scheduled for April 19th, 2021, following Committee of the Whole. Have our confirming bylaw, need a mover and seconder. Moved by Councillor Frake, seconded by Councillor Ritchie. Moved by Councillor Frake, seconded by Councillor Ritchie. Resolve that leave be given to introduce bylaw 21-424 inclusive, and that same be read a first time. All in favor? That's carried. Need a mover and seconder for second and third reading? Moved by Councillor Ritchie, seconded by Councillor Vardy. Moved by Councillor Ritchie, seconded by Councillor Vardy. Resolve that leave be given to introduce bylaw 21-24 inclusive, read a first time, now be read a second and third time, and finally passed, and the mayor and town clerk do sign and seal the same, and the rule council to the contrary notwithstanding. All in favor? That's carried. Meeting is adjourned. Good night, everyone. Have a good evening.